Okay, we'll start this workshop session. And I would ask, please call roll.
Adams.
Here.
Bartlett.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Oh no. Aaron. Scott. Been so used to that.
Right.
Wonkell. Wormowski.
Here.
Aaron Williams.
Here.
Tony Williams.
Here.
There is.
Here.
Freddie Beer.
Here.
One item from the emergency report for the next meeting. It was probably, we want to do it Tuesday night, May the 26th, since we're off Monday, Memorial Day. Usually we do that.
26, 7, 27?
Whatever.
That's a Sunday. I said 26 today.
We're working on it.
We just do it all day on Monday.
Just make it an all-day Monday thing.
28, does the 28th sound good, Tuesday night?
Sure.
Welcome back, Alderman Hopkins.
Yeah, you're missing a point now.
Well, we didn't go with that.
Hey Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I would mention if I could, we have a gallery hop near the building Friday night. It's not the typical first Friday, but first Fridays turned into where they really weren't showing much art. It was seldom as rare.
Correct.
So Deena's doing a show Friday, 5:00 to 7:30. We would hope people, Aldermen and whoever can come, it's a nice show. It's a, she has some nice pieces from the Springfield Watercolor Society. They do incredible work. So, please try to make it Friday night.
This Friday?
Yep.
Great.
What time do you get?
Start 5:00.
And also, if you've got something from Kristen Jamison, Thursday night, there you have a, yeah, there you go. It's in your packet. Silver East Gate. That's Thursday night. I think you've got something in your folders. City Attorney's Report.
Thank you. One item, discuss acquisition of real estate. U.S. Bank has offered to donate to us the parking lot that's kind of southeast of the old building downtown. It's on Norton Street. It's two lots down there at no cost to the city. We have a resolution accepting that donation. I think it's a good idea that we have a resolution whenever something like this comes along, so that on occasion, when people want to donate property to us that we don't really want, we haven't approved it, so we're okay, this one we want to approve. Any questions? It probably will be completed this month, maybe this month. That's all I have.
Questions for Dan? Okay, Committee Reports tonight. Parks and Lakes, Government Article.
We have one item, and I'm going to give her to Dan.
Oh, yes. Parks and Lakes Committee, if I say something wrong, let me know. Parks and Lakes Committee, looking at various fundraisers, one that has been suggested is to have a Queen of Hearts fundraiser out at the pro shop. I should say at, the 19th hole Butch is willing to work with us on that. We have checked, apparently, gaming board has kind of come full circle. Originally, anyone with gaming machines wasn't allowed to have any kind of additional gaming, or poker, or pools, or anything like that. I've been working a bit with Jimmy Duncan, who's been involved with the gaming over at the Amnest. And it is doable if we want to do that. For those of you not familiar with Queen of Hearts, you buy a chance every week, as many chances as you want. They draw on a certain night, if you're there, you get whatever the drawing amount is. If you're not there, I think you maybe get 50% of it, there's some other drawings they have. The amounts that are split can be determined by you, since 19th hole is leased by you. Splits can run anywhere from 50/50 to 80/20. The key is that a not-for-profit or charitable organization must receive a portion of the funds. What's been discussed is a split with the city, most likely to the year mark for the golf course. And then the winner gets whatever the balance is. One item that we're going to have to address, if you'll give us the green light to get with this, is that tickets must be sold by the not-for-profit or the charity. In other words, Butch's employees, who are not employees of the city, would not be able to sell out there, but it could be sold at the clubhouse, because those, I should say, the pro shop, because all of those are employees of the city. Or one event could be over on the busy nights or days over at the 19th hole. But before we went any further with this and gathered up all the information, I wanted to check and see if anyone has any real opposition to this, or I think it was just viewed as one more way to try and get money funneled to the golf course, so it's not losing quite as much money as you.
And that's the only place that we sell the tickets, is that a pro shop?
Or a city employee could be over at the 19th hole selling.
Just an opportunity.
Doesn't raise anybody's taxes.
Look into that.
It doesn't raise anybody's taxes.
And hopefully it's an opportunity to, you know, maybe drive some more people out to the golf course. They've been doing a lot of work out there, painting and enhancing the appearance. So hopefully, it's also just people have an opportunity to go, oh wow, look, there's some things going on out here too.
Are you going to coordinate the night of the drawing with other drawings that are in town?
We haven't given too much more detail. We just wanted to see if there was going to be any pushback at all from the council before really moving forward. So there'll be some additional conversations that I'll have to take place, of course, with Butch and Keith. We just wanted to see if anyone had any, you know.
Reservations?
Correct. So if there are none, then we can continue that conversation with Keith and Keith to see what the next steps would be. So we can take it to the next level, it sounds like, Dan?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the biggest thing was we just wanted to make sure that there weren't going to be any conflicts, except, you know, accepting it, and what the proportions would be, and making sure we were compliant with the gaming. It sounds like we're all good with all of that, which was one of our major concerns. So Dan, I appreciate you making those extra phone calls and making sure that the city is going to get along with that. Thank you. So I'll follow up with, we'll look with you and Butch and Keith will be next. Thank you. That's all we have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Planning in Public Works, Alderman Adams.
We have one item. Discuss request for recent property located at 605 West State. 619 West State Street, and D1, to D1 with special use. And that was for Mr. Hayes to.
Mr. Hefet. Yeah, hometown vet, veterinary clinic.
Yeah, want to put a vet clinic in there and do some work on the outside. Flashing in and out of the position.
And there's been requests to do this with the emergency clause, because they want to get started as quickly as possible with the destruction.
And interior renovations.
So is there anything in the county or through the planning commission from neighbors like that?
No.
There's no objections at all?
Or 605 again?
Stay.
Our.
Ask God, they'll do that.
This building.
Oh, you don't care a soul.
Yeah, it's all a little blue stuff to that work as it goes.
Yeah.
Maybe he had meat, and I will walk around and there you see that.
There's one question, and Mike might be able to answer it. Will be any dogs outside at all, like, you know?
There'll be no, it's all small animals.
Right, no other animals.
And there'll be no boarding outside, they'll have some short-term boarding inside. There is going to be an area, they are also acquiring a lot next door. The grassy area next door, 619 West State. That used to be an old duplex we demolished years ago. They're going to put a fence around that. We've got all the approvals from the Historical Society on that. They're going to put a black aluminum wrought iron style fence around that, so they will have an area where they can take the dogs out to just take a walk and back inside.
Any other discussion? Great, thank you. Public Protection, Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one, is discuss waiving advertising bids for an accepting proposal for one gas-powered golf cart for the Jacksonville Police Department. Chief, would you like to expound on that?
Yeah, I think the proposals were put in packets, and I talked to some of them previously about it. I went for two proposals, just so we'd have two. I approached Hayes Land and Lawn at 1342 South Main last week, and I never heard back from them with a proposal for the specifications that we wanted. So I'd like to go forward with the proposal from Rex Battery. I put in what we were quoted for the cart, plus what it would cost if we had to do it brand-new, plus what it would cost if we had to build the one that they're offering to sell us. It looks like we're going to be offered it at $1,051 savings over what it would cost to have to build one similar. We plan on using it for patrolling the plaza, patrolling the lake, the golf cart path at the lake for special events, parades, and other community-oriented activities. Also, we plan on using funds from the DUI trauma fund, so that won't affect taxpayer dollars. It comes out of a fund that basically sits pretty well idle, but it has to be used, those funds have to be used for some, at least related alcohol enforcement, and we think we can accomplish that by patrolling the bars downtown and also patrolling the lake with it. So that's where we want to acquire those funds that you approve to purchase that. Would they be $100 off of each DUI fund? I don't know what the exact amount that we get, but it goes into an account that has to be used for those types of activities.
Does the corp require a street license? You said you're going to take it uptown handy.
Well, it has to have, we want it to have the specifications that we require people within the community to have on their carts. So it will have every, all the options that the city requires for handling a person with a golf cart. Plus it will have a log bar and siren on and a radio system for the officer.
They're poor little guys.
It is not poor little guys.
You're not going to have any fun at the lake. That's a good idea, Adam.
Okay, thank you. Special Studies, Alderman Wormowski.
Two things that come up that kind of press into one, but Alderman Adams wanted to talk, had some issue he wanted to talk about, and he wanted to bring up quickly, so I was wondering if Alderman Hopkins, you're the ones that have to come from Springfield. Can you meet Thursday at 6:30 for a meeting? And Tony and Lori, can you meet Thursday 6:30?
I cannot, sorry, not this week.
How about next Wednesday?
Hey, I'm wide open on 16th.
How about 22nd? Wednesday, 22nd? Can you start, something like a 6:00 or 7:00 either?
We'll go for 6:00.
Okay, does that sound good to you, Lori?
I can do that.
And that's when?
6:00 PM, Wednesday, 22nd. Brandon, do you want to talk a little bit?
Sure. So I, thank you. I went to JR EDC and spoke with them, the Regional Economic Development Plan, had some issues in there. I read through, one of their main goals was to bring high-speed broadband to the area. And if you look at their first, their first appendices right here, you can see that as Illinois has grown and Sangre County has grown, this is the flat line, that's Morgan and Scott County down here. So, you know, one of the things that I did was talk to the mayor about the broadband issue and the public comment, and got with Dusty Douglas from MCS, and they had previously done a broadband study from January of 2014. And this study basically entails three transportation modes to get high-speed broadband into the community. And each of them are scenarios based on money options and priorities. So basically, the third option was what this study had said was the best for the community, as well as being a full measurability. I contacted the people that are in the back of this study here with their two numbers. One of them had passed, and the other one is no longer with this company, TSI, that did the study, but is with I-3 broadband here in Illinois. So he is, that's who I contacted to see about the study, because since it is five years, it's old, it might need updated with information regarding fiber optics, and the tariffs would increase the price of that. But he had also said that he had spoke with some of the surrounding communities. Dan Kennedy's his name in the back, was, New Berlin was on his radar this week, and they just got done talking with Chadon. And so he said he could possibly set up a meeting with me to discuss revising this study, because I imagine it's public record, the amount of this study. So I, from what they had told me, it was $18,000 for this. And since we haven't acted on it, it might be kind of just a guideline now. And so some of these issues that he could maybe update, he could deal with us. But moving forward on that, one of the things that, the very last page of the JR EDC was the I-72 corridor and data processing housing-related services. This would be any internet technologies. And if you look, the Illinois average is 126,000, and the national average is 113,000. Jacksonville sits at 34,349, which is $92,637 below the Illinois average for this job, around I-72 corridor. So it's basically saying from the JR EDC that if you want these kind of employment opportunities, you're going to need to get the infrastructure to get the jobs here. And in speaking with the entities, I have been advocate at the state and federal level, the entities that are involved, from a general consensus, speaking with, individually with the council members, I, my communications with Next Century Cities have helped start the process to have Jacksonville become a member, which would entail us to be free information needed to expand the broadband initiative here in this community. It would provide us as the council with the information we need to make the decisions on what the proper avenue forward would be, as well as inform the community on what our priorities are in bringing this to Jacksonville. And so that's basically the special study that.
Do you also want to talk about pending state marijuana?
Yes, and so also, the cannabis community in Jacksonville has kind of been ignored from what I have seen. The cannabis industry is booming as far as the national job opportunities. Their industry has been growing by leaps and bounds. I know North Dakota is a medicinal state and just decriminalized this last week, which makes 25 states or half of the country. And we need to look at what we can do to accept Jacksonville's community into the cannabis industry. There's a lot of options as far as hemp farming, CBD, and as far as getting a dispensary or any kind of cultivation here. And what we can do to try to be proactive about this, if the state will be deciding on it sometime this year. Maybe we could take a look at what the state has entailed and enact that as a city proactively instead of reactively, to try to help gain that industry that maybe might be teetering on where to go in this state. All the, all the businesses that are started in the cannabis community are basically new businesses. So basically, every one of them would be looking at location first. And so maybe we can draw some of them here by looking into a special study that would accept cannabis, see what it has to offer as far as what we need to do for the community and accepting cannabis into Jacksonville.
That's great, and thanks Alderman Adams. And previously, the city council worked with someone who wanted to do a state bid for the medicinal marijuana that we, our community lost that project to bury. So he said that, you know, maybe the next one that comes up, we're proactive when it comes up, we can get it to sell it. That's part A, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So 6:00 PM Wednesday, here somewhere, we'll figure out where it is. Second part of that is several people, there's Brian Leonard, Kevin Kine, and Sky Dewolf right here. They wanted to talk a little bit about Airbnbs in the community, or in the expanded community. So you guys want to make a presentation?
Who wants to?
Kevin, go first, man.
You want me to go first? I've got the longest experience with the guests.
Yes, you do, tiny beer.
So some of you know me. You've had me in class before.
You're looking good.
Yeah. Looked just like I did 33 years ago, didn't you? So let me just introduce myself a little bit. I'm Kevin Kine, and I'm a professor of economics since 1986 at Illinois College. I teach economics and entrepreneurship at the college. I'm also, and because you're talking about corridor 72, I'm also a board member at Illinois Lake Creek Co-op for the last couple of years. I've lived at my current address, which is just north of Nortonville, for those of you that know where it's at, since 1990. And I've been in the area since 1986, so this has been a longer part of my life than anywhere else in life. I manage a prairie restoration that we started 23, or it's in 1990, and we have 23 acres of prairie restoration going on. That's important in my business, because we started in 2014 an Airbnb rental business there on an apartment that we had as part of our attached garage. And we call our Airbnb Peace on the Prairie, because it's very peaceful out in the country, and it's on a prairie. So it really is appropriately named, we think, and according to our customers. They think that same thing too. When I was building that apartment, I heard a radio advertisement, and we were trying to figure out exactly what to do with the apartment. We had originally planned something else with it. And I went in and told my wife I'd heard about this new business model called Airbnb. And I wanted to maybe list our property on Airbnb. For those of you that don't really know Airbnb very well, what Airbnb is, is individual property owners who list their property for rental on the Airbnb website. And so Airbnb doesn't own the properties, it's individual people like me and Brian and Scotty that own the property, and we manage the property. And it's just an opportunity to advertise our property through Airbnb. Our initial investment was about $26,000 as we renovated an existing space. It was doing well enough, and we can see some metrics on how many people look at the site. That I thought that we could probably do a second site, and so we built a brand-new building. We started planning it in 2017 and started building it in 2018. And I've invested another about $60,000 on that building. All of that material was bought locally, and all of the labor was local. So from an econ point of view, there's a multiplier effect in the community of our investment, and there's, and I'll describe our experience with guests a little bit. But last week for the county board, I estimated that we'd probably had about a $350,000 impact on the local area since we opened up five years ago. So, you know, it's pretty good. So where do the people come from? They find us on Airbnb, and they may just be traveling through the area. They're on vacation, and they're looking for a stopping point for my place, and I'm sure Brian's place. They're looking for something outside of the city, and they wouldn't stop here if it weren't for our places being available. When they do stop here, they go and get gasoline, they get groceries here, they go to the movies here, they shop downtown at the parade store, and the coffee shop, and the donut shop. And they just really do a lot of shopping in town and drop a lot of money in town. In our place, I've also specifically advertised in the Chicago area on my own, because I knew that we were having a lot of Chicago people come down. They're willing to travel three or four hours, one way for a trip, just to get out of the city. And the reason they come to my place is the name Peace on the Prairie. And so they're wanting to get away from the city, into the country, where they can see the night skies, where they can listen to the birds, where they can have fresh air, they can have quiet, they don't have urban gunshots. They have other gunshots out in our area, but not the urban gunshots. And I got to tell you that, you know, we've had, we've been doing it for five years. We've had hundreds of people stay at our property. And universally, we've had great experiences with the people that are there. They, you hear horrible stories about Airbnb. You don't, and you hear dozens of those horrible stories, and you don't hear the millions of great stories that happen at Airbnb. And, you know, I'll let the other guys talk about some of their great stories, but people, or it's mostly middle-income people that are staying at our property at least, they're extraordinarily respectful of the property. Often, I don't have to do anything to flip it to get to the next people. The people that stayed this weekend, they all washed the sheets and made the beds and cleaned the place. Like, it's like, what am I supposed to do now? You know, I'm supposed to maintain this place. But they're respectful of the neighbors, they're respectful of just everything. And they're bringing dollars into the community that wouldn't otherwise be coming here. So I just wanted to relay that, our very positive experience.
So you come, you go next.
My name is Brian Leonard. I'm the Director of Marketing at Illinois College. My family's lived in Jacksonville for many, many years. We live south of town, out in the county and the country. And our Airbnb is a restored log cabin that we moved from Adams County. And it started out as just a fun project that I wanted to do, and somehow talked my wife into letting me do it. And years later, as we were completing the project, discovered Airbnb. So we've been doing it about two years now, and everything that Kevin has said has been the exact same for us as well. For two years, we've been booked every single weekend. We've had hundreds of people come and stay. We haven't had a single experience that wasn't 100% positive. We hosted people from all over the world. Last week, we had two couples from Poland that were traveling across the country on Route 66. They wanted the log cabin experience, and that's what brought them to our community. And we also offer, I think, an opportunity, one time, a very fun experience that we had was we hosted a dozen Nigerian dwarf goats, because what happened was a family was traveling back. They went to get a breed out in New York, and they're on their way to Missouri. They're looking for a place where they could stop and spend the night, but also a place where they could pen these goats. And I said, well, I'll figure out something like that. So anyway, all that to say, it's just been a wonderful experience. As Kevin says, all those individuals, eight out of 10, if not nine out of 10 people come to our place, have no connection to Jacksonville, and are only coming because of our cabin. And then they come to town, I went to try finding the local restaurants, and it's just been a wonderful, wonderful experience.
Were you the one that sets right off 267?
No, that is just, I know that little cabin you're talking about. I know wherever your little cabin in Morgan County is. But no, I don't know who owns that property, but I know that cute little cabin. No, we're off Old Airport Road, about a mile off of 67.
All right.
Yep, so.
All right, that is close to town.
Hello, everybody, I'm Scotty Dewolf. And first of all, I'd like to mention that when I first decided to do this Airbnb thing with my units, my business plan was based on a theory I came up with that I was losing money having low rents, you know, in 350 to 550 a month. And by the time I get people out after six months, I had to spend more money than I had collected in order to lose money again. So I thought of this Airbnb thing, and I said, what have I got to lose? I pushed the pencil with it and figured, even if I only did 30% occupancy, which is miserable, I would still net two and a half times what I normally would after expenses doing the other way. So that's the basis of the business thesis. That said, as soon as I made that decision in my mind, I went to the mayor's office, and I went to Brittany Henry at the Visitor Convention Bureau, and declared to them that I wanted to preempt and get ahead of the curve of the fact that Airbnb didn't have a mechanism to take the tax off. And I said, I believe in this community, I want to support it with your convention bureau, everything. How can I do it, you know? She said, well, right now, there's no mechanism for that. And it was sort of an issue of, if they didn't even take money from me for the tax, would it be like admitting that Airbnbs were okay, and someone didn't think they were okay? would be like admitting that Airbnbs were okay and someone didn't think they were okay. And to dispel anyone's concern about the quality of Airbnbs, it's a self-regulated industry. We don't even have to do it. Anyone who doesn't get at least a five-star rating consistently over time will be approached and if they can't pull it up to that, they literally take them off the platform. So if they're self-standard operators and doing bad things or not treating people correctly, that that's in the interest of tourism here, they can't even operate as Airbnb. And like these folks, I got two foreigners and one from Canada and one from Milan, Italy, who say they always seek out those Airbnbs rather than hotels because it's their European tradition. And European tourists spend money. Also, I'm a man on a mission because I feel that this whole town is so under-exploited for tourism, it isn't even funny. And I've got a hundred ways, I don't have time to tell you now. Anybody wants to talk to me, approach me. And let's get tourism joined here because this is the kind of pain industry that can really get us up and running as a community. And so to me, I'm saying anyone who wants to object to this or limit or eliminate Airbnb is saying, if you look at those reviews, that people, they don't want people that have that much of a good time to stay here. You want them to go to Springfield or New Berlin, anywhere else but here. And I don't see how we can pass up this kind of quality business. And myself, and I'm trying to encourage, and I'm sure I already have Brian and Kevin here, to start up a fledgling trade organization in which our sole mission will be for us and other BnBs as well as Airbnbs to get together and have a once-a-month fun business breakfast where we'll just push each other to figure out how can we get consistently five-star ratings? I get consistent ratings like that, these gentlemen do too. But, and it doesn't happen by accident, we're experienced PR people. And we can, you know, communicate this knowledge to others. And expanding our further on the tourism thing, I have a grand plan where I want to empower all the business people in this town and even local citizens to be ambassadors for goodwill to tourists and visitors in Jacksonville. Where we could even have an app that everybody could have, the business people, where they click to it, a customer comes in and says, do you have a fisherman? Any fishing around here? There you go. There it is. And here's the guide that'll take you on a hunting trip. Speaking of hunting, our venues are especially desired by hunters, fishermen and sportsmen. And those people are notorious good spenders. And I want us to also target those people because there's not very many facilities at the wilderness sites. But we could promote ours as the go-to site for Pike County sportsman things and all that sort of thing. And do things like give them a bonus bucket lunch and a bonus a coffee to go as part of the deal when they go on their trip, little things like that. And they can want to come back to Jacksonville. And that's what it's all about. And the rest of my case for boosting tourism in Jacksonville. Thank you very much for letting me go on and on.
To support BnBs, what do they ask, what we have to do here?
This is just mostly informational?
Yeah, okay, because I heard something about taxes. So I was like, do we need to?
Oh, oh, I want to mention that, yes. What I did is I went in and volunteered to pay the tax, whatever it is, but they wouldn't take my money because there's no mechanism for it. And there's some way of taking the money would say that we're like a hotel, which we're not, you know. But we're a little different. But what I would like to propose, my goodie for God, is, and I don't know if these gentlemen will go along with it, but I'd like to propose it to them. There's a wonderful cause here since they won't take our money for the fees of, you know, even volunteering it. I'd like to volunteer five percent of all my sales, just take it off there or add it to it however, and put it to this wonderful new museum that needs all the help that you can get. And that's going to be another thing that will feed tourism here. And I was thinking, we could at least do that. And then when such time comes that the city makes a deal with Airbnb or figures a mechanism where I can take that tax out legitimately and give it to you, then of course I would switch over if you would like us to do that. But meanwhile, at least we want to show that we are supporting this community and we're not trying to dodge that responsibility, you know.
So I talked to the legislative affairs person from Airbnb. She had an article in the Illinois Business League magazine a couple of months ago. So right now Airbnb is kind of like in a gray area where they want to be part of the state tourism bureau and pay the occupancy tax, but it's not part of state law and they haven't changed the state law. So Airbnb has an agreement with the state that all their properties will collect the one per, I think it's a one percent state occupancy tax. It's like any hotel or motel you stay and you pay that tax.
About six percent.
Is it six percent?
Yeah, yeah. So, so the state occupancy tax, it's really like five point four percent, something like that. But Airbnb collects six percent, gives it to the state. I asked the state what they do with the extra six tenths and they says, well, we just keep it. But, but we do pay the state occupancy tax, hotel motel. There's a, there's a state law that says if you, if you're renting for less than thirty days, then you have an obligation to pay the state hotel motel tax. And so that Airbnb collects it and pays it to the state. It doesn't even come through our fingers, which is a really nice thing. And I, you know, I think all of us would, would say, you know, we love Jacksonville area and we really want to promote the Jacksonville area. I would, I would just love to be able to say to all of my guests, here are different things that you can do in Jacksonville when you come and visit. It just, it improves our visit for them and improves their experience here. And then they want to come back over and over again. We get a fair amount of repeat business where people are just saying, I love Jacksonville. I just want to get away. And Brian and I live out in the country, so we aren't in the city limits. So, you know, we're not subject to the city taxes. But I did want to tell you that we have, there's a lot of money that comes into Jacksonville because of our business.
So to pick up on that, so I stand corrected on the tax level. But then there's also the local hotel tax and that's something that's in progress on like a state level where right now it's not, it's not, it's not a requirement. It's not like a state system to pay into that if you're an Airbnb. And it's something that Airbnb is working at on a state level. And they can, they can maybe figure it out, but the problem with, for Airbnb is that if they do a voluntary, voluntarily collect taxes for local jurisdictions, they'd have to figure it out for every single jurisdiction in Illinois. So right now what they're doing is they're suggesting to the properties like, you can do this and just like collect the money yourself and send it to the local municipality. So that's what Scotty was going to do.
Okay.
So right now, our state, our tax is eight percent for visitors bureau, visitors convention bureau. And he's offering to just collect five percent and give it to the heritage cultural to him. So, so there's nothing for us to do right now. This is something that's going on a state level.
Just say thank you.
Steve, I may have, Brittany is gathering information on Airbnbs and how they're treated in other municipalities on this very tax condition and see what we can do there. There's also a zoning component to it that Kelly's got information on. So we may throw it all back to the special studies committee with proposed ordinance or whatever we're going to do so where everyone's on an even playing field, so to speak. I know Kelly's got some information, he was a junior too, so we'll be all that coordinated. And we do accept that as special studies. Let's get his head to you.
Two other property owners that contacted me asking, saying they wanted to develop like the Airbnb property in town and they didn't know exactly how to do it. Something's gone anywhere.
Right, so we want to get past that hurdle so people have some clear guidelines. One, is it allowed? Obviously you are. And two, what are the requirements for the city? And then what if they, one of the things Brittany is working on is for those hotels that are not within the city limits that want to participate in her programs, setting up some sort of services agreement where they pay directly in. And then that would kind of coordinate with the Airbnbs as well so that everyone is on an even playing field and that would give them the benefit of all of Brittany's work as a visitor convention bureau as far as advertising and referrals and so forth. So it's a good mix, it's just we need to put the pieces together on it.
One thing to look at is when people want to stay in town, a lot of times with Lenz Field, such a great thing, but they're booking up our hotel solid. And so a lot of times we're losing hotels stays in Springfield. And I talked to George Hamilton, he said that's an issue for his business, that if someone wants to have a wedding, that his guests or the people from the wedding have to stay in Springfield. So that's the only place where they can get a hotel stay. And as we saw recently with the new hotel that went up, they talked to Jacksonville first, but then they have to go to South Jacksonville just because the hotel model is to be located off the interstate. So is a big hotel going to come to town in Jacksonville? Or are they going to want to go to South Jacksonville if you do have to buy the interstate? So the nice thing about if, as we go forward, allowing, he's setting up a mechanism for Airbnb and other short-term rental properties open, is that you can do that in Jacksonville instead of having to go to South Jacksonville or somewhere else out in the county.
We've got the potential with that.
Right. And it's also someone, you know, like someone like me or you even, you can even do a property because it would be a small-scale thing. In order to build like a giant hotel, you need a corporation, you need an investment. This is something that anyone who's, you know, an investor or small business person could do.
Yeah, I'll do that after the question.
Yeah.
Has the city ever looked at how many units for hotel and BnBs are available versus how many events we have that lead to full amount of units?
So Brittany has. Brittany would have that information, by the way.
Just as a point of information, Illinois College ended graduation this last weekend and I know of a family that had to rent in Lincoln because I was the closest that I could get.
I just want to mention that after I volunteered to pay the tax and couldn't pay it even though I wanted to, I said, well, I said, surely you wouldn't mind if I left my brochures here, you know. Actually, you cannot have any brochures here. And I just find that kind of not so, it's not good for the community to know what their options are. You know, I think it might, so anyway, if someone can figure out what we need to do, we gladly do whatever it is, new blood plots, whatever, in order to get our brochures in there because we feel that we serve a separate function. It doesn't really directly compete with the likes of Hampton United.
I think in a nutshell, the issue is if CBD accepts your funds, they're giving approval, these are okay in Jacksonville and Jacksonville government has not yet said they're okay. So that's why, and but then the reverse is they can only be publicizing those who are their members. So we want to get our package together so that you can be a member of visitors convention bureau and get the same advertising and referrals.
I think it's John Brecker that all of us are more than willing and want to do our civic duty.
That's what Brittany shared with me.
Okay, we have to let you know that that's our attitude. Thank you, Kevin. Thanks for letting us.
Thank you, everyone.
Utility, you want to handle that, Jeff?
Utility is one. Discuss change order number one for the Northwest Street and West Lockhead Avenue water main replacement project.
I'll take that, Jeff.
You got that one?
I got that.
I know nothing about that. It's all they have.
Watch that bag. It's a waste. The project is complete, went very well. There was a couple items that weren't really required, so we had a decrease change order of forty-nine hundred and twenty dollars.
You saved us money? You did that? Oh, man, okay. Thank you. I'm happy.
I'm trying.
Good night.
Now, anticipate a little bit of an increase on this.
You can give us a little.
That we're lining now on passiment and walnut. Things are a little shaky, so we may have some extras there. You can give us a little bit here, now and then, just making note of that.
I will.
Thank you.
Yeah, any public comment at this time? No public comment. We will move the motion to go into exec session. All the cooks, anybody on the large old net?
This is for property acquisition and collective bargaining.